Welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. We appreciate you being here today. Before we get started, we have Dr. Tony Romans with us to lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Let's pray, please. Holy Heavenly Father, we come before your throne, by the way, open and made available through your Son Jesus, to find the mercy and grace you promised in time of help, in time of need. Father, we confess today, we are always a needy people. Father, it's in your sufficiency we ask for grace and favor and blessing on our judge, on our commissioners, on their families. Father, day that you would grant them your grace and favor as they perform the divine duty, you elevated them too. Father, we pray today for our law enforcement and ask God for your watch, care, and protection over them. And Father, you bring to know the plan of the enemy, all that would do wicked or evil, God, that you would expose and make known that righteousness might prevail and we might live in peace. So, Father, to your grace and mercy, we humble ourselves today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Dr. Romans, thank you, sir. Well, again, good morning. The time is 9:03. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Bring your attentions to a new line on the agenda that's called Court Announcements. And the intentions of this line is to be available for the announcements of appointed positions. And today, I have been informed by Mr. Maurice Cox, who is our representative on the Appraisal District Board, that he is wishing to step down. He, we reappointed him to the position a few months ago to help during the reorganization that was required by New Texas State Law. He's fulfilled that, and he, again, is requesting that he be allowed to step down from this. He served two terms for us previously, and then came in here at the last after Ms. Cheryl had passed away. So, if there's anyone wishing to be considered for appointment to the Appraisal District as Henderson County's representative, contact my office or Commissioners' offices and let your feelings be known. At this point in time, now we'll move to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes of previous held meeting of Commissioners' Court on February the 25th, 2025. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the Commissioners' Court regular session February 25th, 2025, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the amendments of February 25th, 2025, as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on a request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Collector Assessor.
Good morning. I have five refund checks for court approval totaling $38,952.89.
Court, questions?
I see the biggest one, $22,000, was double payment.
Yes. Yeah.
It looks like we're getting into the overpayments of, I guess, CoreLogic, which they're overpaying.
CoreLogic is a mortgage-
Mortgage deal where they're-
They service for the mortgage, several mortgage companies.
When your taxes are escrow, when you're paying and stuff.
Yeah, I believe they actually paid over $7,000 parcels this year.
Out of about 130, 125, 130,000 parcels?
I don't know the exact account.
It's somewhere around around there. Okay. Court, any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on the request for refund on overpayment of taxes for 2024 taxes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item three is consider and take action on the Henderson County Emergency Service District Six, 2023-2024 financial audit in accordance with House Bill 3764 for filing purposes only. Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, Court, this is a financial statement or an audit. If the emergency service district brings in more than $250,000 in revenue for the tax year, they have to file this financial statement that they give to the county court for filing and stuff, and they're just going through the procedure on their annual filing for us to go over this and make sure that they have their transparency for the public.
Questions or comments, Court? HB 3764 requires that these reports be turned in, be them the full audit, as this or the sworn-to financial statements are all to be turned in by all 11 ESDs prior to June the 1st. After June the 1st, they can ask for a 30-day extension, but if those are not received in that time by September 1, as we all know by law, they are removed statutorily. So, it's, this is the first one for this year, and looking forward to having them all in this year. Any other comments, Court? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Six, 2023-2024 Annual Financial Audit in accordance with HB 3764 for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item number four, consider and take action on a request to move Development Office Position FP 003 from pay grade 205, Step 1 of $39,251, to pay grade 272, Step 1, $43,076. Commissioners, or Ms. Kimbra?
Good morning, Court. This request was reviewed with HR and with the Audit Department regarding some of our discussions from last year in the budget process. Some of the commissioners had questions regarding the experience that my FP 3 position had at that time. I'm happy to report that that employee has become proficient in site visits, communications, and I think we all can still learn some better communication skills, as well as office procedures. And this would put her pay more in line with her capabilities at this time.
Court, questions?
I know this is something we talked about whenever we first hired her, is that we pretty well just hired her in as an office manager position.
Correct.
Till we got the experience that we thought she needed to have for this job. But it's your opinion that she has got, received some of that training and knowledge and is able to go out and work some of these cases on her own?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, she's been on her own some. She's been the backup when I've been out. If there's field that needs to be done, she's also done some field on her own, even when I've been available and tied up with other meetings or other responsibilities. So, excellent skill set. She will be moving toward her online certification, which we've learned that she can do online rather than having to travel. And we will be pursuing that this year. She will be pursuing that this year.
Would this money come from our state fund buffer, or where would this money?
Where, how did you compare grade 205 to grade 272?
I worked with Ms. McCauley in the Audit Office and took some suggestions from, at least input from one commissioner regarding, we didn't have that particular pay grade, and that's how we worked through that.
Look at this. We're looking at putting another vehicle into the Development Office, too. We have that down at our shop right now, going through it. What do we have budgeted for fuel for, do you have for Development Department? Do we know what our budget is for fuel, if it's enough for two vehicles?
Sorry, I'm trying to find what the, there we go. Fuel is currently budgeted at $3,000.
We don't have on there total use of fuel from last year yet, do we, for the full budget?
No. It looks like, did we already double it? In '24, the adopted budget for fuel was almost $3,000, if I'm looking at this correctly. We started out at $1,500 with the starting figures of 2025, and what we settled on was $3,000.
So, we did add money to the budget for fuel?
We did.
Okay.
But it looks like in '24, we had to adjust up, and I don't have the other figures, because fuel in '22, but I don't know that these are right because of the switching of when we flood planes and the addition of development and so forth. Fuel costs in '21 were $881, '22, $2,036. This is $407.3. Any other questions? Discussion? When you look in our notes from last year, it was presented to the court to increase that salary to pay grade 230, Step 1, which was at $40,461, and the court chose not to, and I believe that's what you were alluding to-
Yes, sir.
-was the other. We chose not to do that at that time.
I know we had a long discussion, you know, about wanting to get the experience and everything, make sure we had a good fit for the job, and that we were going to get the training and be able to go out, which I know this job is different than a lot of others. She has to go out and talk with the constituents and the landowners and property owners and builders and contractors and engineers and everything else. So, we just wanted to make sure that we had the right person in the spot that was going to get that training and be able to go out and do that. You're saying that that-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's what's happening.
Much more meets my expectations than what our job plan was to hire. Ms. Woodard has been excellent.
I know we visited a good bit during budget about this same thing. So, I'll make the motion that we move the Development Office Position FP 003, Pay Grade 205, Step 1, to Pay Grade 272, Step 1.
I'll second the motion. And 272 is, that's the same pay grade as our environmental people that go out and do the illegal dump. They basically kind of do the same travel and stuff like that. That's where we set it at, is in the 272, but the environmental.
We have a motion in a second. Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the request to remove Development Office Position FP 003 from Pay Grade 205, Step 1, $39,251, to Pay Grade 272, Step 1, $43,076. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Oppose? Passes 4-1. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Court.
Item five, consider and take action concerning matters related to vehicles authorized for purchase for constable departments. In court, we had this discussion a couple of days ago, a couple of weeks ago, concerning the type of vehicles that allowed to be purchased for the constable departments. And at that time, we had presented to us the price sheet for a truck with the build-out per the constable's request of what he wanted, or what a constable would want in the vehicle. And the discussion turned to cost comparisons and past precedent. We now have the cost for the SUV and the price-out package to, for lights, cages, per sheriff's department specifications. So, open it up for discussion.
Well, it looks like the truck's about $13,000 cheaper than the, than the Durango.
The total rig-out cost.
Yeah. Well, the truck itself, and then, you know, you got $8,700 rig-out.
Yeah.
Nearly $88 on the rig-out. But these Durangos have to be rigged out also, don't they?
I think they can.
That's a part of the pricing, that additional $13,000 is the rig-out.
Part out, so, about $5,000 then.
Right, rigged out.
Yeah, difference in pricing of the truck and the Durango.
The base unit of the truck is $1,000 more than the base unit for the SUV. And then there's, per constable, it was $8,700 for rig-out, per constable spec, which is a little different than the sheriff's spec. It's of a lesser one, or less equipment involved. And the SUV unit, as the fit-out for it, was a flat $13,000. Historically, as we said, the court, the previous courts had chosen to no longer procure trucks for constables and went to the SUVs. And since there has been quite a bit of discussion of late, there's one truck remaining, a 2011 constable truck with 140-something thousand miles on it. And my guess is he's wanting a truck, is why we're having this discussion.
Well, he spoke with me, his preference would be a truck, but he'll take whatever we give. I mean, he just needs another vehicle.
Yeah.
It'd be whatever we decide. But his preference would be a truck, which I know probably one or two more of the other ones would prefer a truck also. And then, too, the, I don't know that we didn't want to just purchase them a truck, but the trucks were considerably higher than the Durangos at, you know, four years period ago, whenever we made this decision to go to the Durango. I think it was about four or five years ago, wasn't it?
Six, that was before I became judge.
Okay.
I was still Commissioner. And one of the discussions back then was the operating cost.
Yeah.
You know, fuel and tires. If you remember, we were having a huge issue with tire replacement with one department. And much of that is why we had switched to the SUVs, was a less expensive operating cost.
I think we need to stay consistent across the county of what we're purchasing in departments and things. So, I'm going to be for the Durango.
Comments? Discussion?
My comment, you know, same thing. Haven't bought a new vehicle since 2007 at our precinct. It's been nice having a used pickup be handed down, just like this 2011. It'll probably go to one of our precincts for maintenance. And that's the only thing I look at for the future, that if we keep buying these deals, and then we know that when you put one of these SUVs in the auction, the return on them's not near as much as what a pickup is, even when you put a pickup in the auction, also the resale on it. Here in Texas, when you put a pickup in a resale auction, it brings more money. And we do need the pickups out there. I mean, they do come in handy for certain things. And that's my only issue. It's not who gets what to drive or whatever, but there is pickups needed in the county. Maybe not at this point, but we know we want to put the constables in a dependable vehicle. Road and Bridge doesn't have to have something that's going to make it from A to B in a emergency situation. So, that's what we look at, is getting these used vehicles after they're used up by the first responders and stuff, and being able to use them in Road and Bridge. And that's the only thing I'm looking out for for the future.
When we, when we move to, when we move the sheriff to get, you know, he don't get as many pickup trucks as he used to get either. I think he's got a couple in the last couple of years, but just like Commissioner said, I haven't bought a new vehicle at my precinct since I've been a commissioner. Because we usually get those vehicles at $150,000, and, you know, we're not driving them that much.
Yeah.
And they'll usually last us, I mean, I still got, when I started, the commissioner before me had gotten a vehicle, and I've still got that vehicle. So, they'll go a long ways. But, I mean, we can look at it in both ways. I'd like to stay consistent. I know probably some of them wanted pickups when we bought them the Durangos, but this is our decision. So, I mean, we're supplying them with vehicles. If we think we need to move that direction and have a few more pickups on the road where we could hand them down, then I don't think that's a bad decision for the county. Because most of us can't use the Durangos, you know, on the road crew, so.
You know, we, we just got one sheriff's department did for animal patrol. How many animal patrols do y'all have? Three. Are they all in pickups?
Yes.
All in pickups.
I do have one question. Are we, I see the inventory tax on these, don't we exempt from paying tax? I know we're exempt from the sales tax and all of that, but-
Does the inventory tax refer to our inventory?
Right. The dealerships pay in to the county, the VIT, the Vehicle Inventory Tax. And I was just-
Inventory tax?
Yeah. No, sorry, inventory tax. It's a minor amount and a minor point, but I just saw that on here. That was, I didn't think we paid tax.
They state fuel tax.
We do on that.
And they'll charge you for federal excise tax, too, if you don't fill out the forms.
Will they? Any further discussion on this? Entertain a motion on what type of vehicle.
I move, I make the motion, we buy the Dodge truck for precinct three constable.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the purchase of Dodge vehicle for purchase for the Henderson County Constable Precinct Three. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Oppose? Passes 3-2. Item number six is receive financial reports, of which we have none. Item number seven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Mr. Minna?
Yes, sir. Yes, Court, I have the biweekly totals for biweekly number four and five.
Court, any questions concerning biweekly four? There are none? Are there any questions on biweekly five? Hearing no questions, entertain a motion on both.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the payroll distributions for number four and five as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. And Q. Item eight, consider and take action on submitted contracts, of which we have none. Item number nine is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Commissioner?
Yes, I have two notices- Yes, I have two notice of proposed utility line activities. Both of them, we'll do both of them at the same time. They're both Leakeville Water Supply Company. One of them is a road bore on Horton Lane, County Road 3617, and the other one is a road bore on County Road 3520.
Court, questions? Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Leakeville Water Supply Company for road bores on County Road 3617, Horton Lane, and County Road 3520.
I'll second the motion.
With the Commissioner's signature.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreements with Leakeville Water Supply Corporation for road bores along County Road 3520 and 3617 as presented with the Commissioner's authorization to sign both. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item 10 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, which we have none. Now, item 11 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, we have two votes today. The first one is fiscal year 2024, an amount of $353,526.10.
Court, questions concerning the 2024 bills?
This Odyssey hosting, it says from 10/1/2023 to 9/30/2024. Do we pay for it that far behind, or?
We've received a renewal notice, and one thing we've learned about dealing with Tyler Technologies is if you have no leverage, they will not listen to you, and there was, yes, there was negotiations for about six months concerning the renewal, and quite honestly, there's a little bit of blame to be placed on us, but this is a legitimate hosting cost per the previous contract for last year, yes, and I want to thank the Audit Office for making this happen, Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Monk. So that's the reason this particular bill is what it is, so. Any further questions? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $353,526.10 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the 2024 bills in the amount of $353,526.910 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Ms. Carpenter?
My fiscal year 2025 is around $358,524.35.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
Is, this is just on the recording, but is the percent used, is that, we still having trouble with that?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 bills in the amount of $358,524.35 as presented.
I'll second this motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the fiscal year 2025 bills in the amount of $358,524.35 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted plats. Thank you. Item 13 is open and consider bills. Ms. Torres?
Bids.
Bids, not bills, bids, pardon.
Good morning.
Morning.
So this morning, I have the fiscal year 2025 tire bid, bid package. The date that I have is first advertisement this Saturday, March 8, second next Saturday, March 15. We open the bid April 1 and come back to court for award April 8.
Okay, Court, questions? The tire bid is usually our most beloved bid. Have we made any changes in how we are collecting the information or anything that may streamline the tire bid process?
Not really. The only change has been that One Stop is no longer in business, I believe, so now they're Steve's Autos, but they do business the same.
And one last question. Going for bid, as we normally do, does not preclude us from also using the state contract or a purchasing co-op as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the invitation for bid specifications for the fiscal year 2025 tire bid as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. And item 14 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:35. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us here today.